I'm trying to feed it. Paul? Paul? There we go.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I hear you, Paul.
Okay, great.
I don't hear Carrie, though.
She must have herself muted.
Yeah, I think so.
Oh, well, too bad, so sad.
Hi, Charlotte.
Howdy. I thought that it would be gone by now, it wouldn't be so bright behind me, but. Too bad, so sad. Lucky I'm here. Sorry, just wait, see, I'm getting down.
You've got a blinding light behind you, Charlotte.
Oh, that's my halo, can't you tell?
Okay. I don't see you, Jack.
I, huh?
I don't see ya.
Oh, I'm probably.
Turn your camera on.
Yeah, it's probably off.
Broke down there in the corner.
There you go.
Hey, Jack.
Howdy, everybody. Thank you, Carrie.
Charlotte, you've got a really bright light right above your head.
That's my halo.
Ah.
Hey, that's the window, it ain't going away, I ain't doing nothing. I don't think I can get rid of it.
So Dan is trying, he said that his internet is extremely slow.
I'm sitting here, I got real dizzy while I was sitting here, so. I may not last through the meeting.
Have you eaten recently?
Oh, yeah.
All this aggravation.
That's better, Charlotte.
Yeah, a little bit, this is good as it's gonna get, because I ain't gonna try and move all this stuff. Paul, can you say something?
Something. I, I can only see four of us, I, I have to switch screens to see Jack.
Because you're on your phone, right?
Yeah, I switch screens, does that make a difference to you guys when I switch screens?
No, no. I can see everybody so far fine.
Yeah, I made mine all big. So it took up the whole page. So everybody spread out a little bit.
Lay back or something.
Not feeling too blessed. Don't look like Jack's feeling good.
No, he doesn't.
Charlie? Come up here a minute.
Maybe you should call somebody.
No.
Well, the mayor is joining.
Okay.
And Norton's iPad, I don't know who that is.
Scott.
It's Scott, oh, yeah.
I'll be back if I can.
There we go. There. Hello, hello. Hey, Paul. Hey, Charlotte, Karen, Dennis.
How you doing, buddy?
Okay.
Jack had to leave, he's not feeling good.
Yeah.
Who is?
Jack.
Jack's not feeling good?
No.
Hello.
Hello.
Hey, Joe.
So Robert is waiting, how is he getting in, if I'm on his?
He said he was gonna, he, he had a way, he already said. Personal mail or, or his personal one or something.
Oh, okay. And Dan has said that his is running slow.
Okay.
Dan.
Mine should be on.
You're picturing it, yep.
Like your Scotts?
Cam's coming. Well, Scott hasn't turned on his camera.
And what do I need to do this?
So who are we missing?
You're missing me, but I'm here.
Okay.
I hear Jack.
I had to stretch out here on the couch.
Well, it's just Dan that we're missing right now.
Hey, there, Scott.
Oh, there he is. Hey, Scott.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Trying to stay away from all this junk.
So, whoa. There's Paul, I see Paul, hi, Paul.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Just waiting on Dan.
Dan?
I went up, I went up to Acme yesterday, last evening, and I think I was the only one in there with the mask on besides workers.
Yeah, I don't know why, they're not, they can't, they can't make us wear them, they can encourage. Here at our, at Manchester Road where I'm at, it seems like everybody's got it, I won't say everybody, but probably about seventy-five percent of them have them on, as far as employees.
What about the people?
Oh, you're talking people. Yeah.
You've got us running live on YouTube right now, Carrie.
It says on the top left of my screen.
It's live on YouTube and recording, so, good. So Dan's got a minute or so here.
Justin's coming in.
Okay.
There he is.
Hey, Justin.
Hello, I'm gonna turn off my virtual background here.
I want to know how to do the virtual background, I need to.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Oh, you're going back to the beach then?
How come I only see eight people, can you see?
He's got a virtual background, where's ours?
I, I made my own.
I do too, so I can't, well, I had a halo, but I got rid of that.
A halo?
But it covered up those horns.
Can hardly see him anyway, right now.
Yeah, I'm still not seeing, um, Dan.
I'm gonna text Dan.
I just did.
Okay.
And he didn't respond yet, he said his internet is really slow.
If we, um, okay, he says he's there. If we need to, I can have him call me and have him by telephone, I think that, would that be okay, Justin, if we need to?
I've got, I, I'm listening, I, I can hear you.
Waiting for Dan.
Did you hear me, Joe?
Yes.
Yes, I hear you, yes, I heard you.
Okay, I just letting you know I'm here, but I'm laying dead.
Dennis, where did you go?
I'm coming back, I don't know.
He turned his, he turned his camera off.
There, there we go. I always see people, you see everybody?
If you click up the top where it has all of the squares, it'll show all of the people at once.
Robert, you're, yeah, Robert, you gotta fix your camera, buddy.
So Dan's telling me he's been on all along.
Okay.
Oh, his speaker's not on.
I have been on, I just, my computer's wallet's on it on.
Okay.
All it's gonna take is. I saw the meeting ID, but where do I put it?
So you put the, there's a three, seven, eleven-digit number you put in for the meeting number, and then you click. So when you bring up Zoom, there should be a spot that says, meeting ID, I think.
Yes, it says meeting ID, and then you type the number in, the meeting ID, and hit join the meeting, then it'll call for a password, put your password in, and then that's when you'll get, you'll all get access.
On the screen is that meeting ID, because I didn't have any trouble getting on the last two times, we tested.
So close out and start your Zoom again, okay?
Okay, just sign out?
Yep.
Okay.
Close out and start it up again.
Okay.
Yep, you're on speakerphone, so everybody can hear you.
Yeah, I think it kind of wants to be part of the meeting, so bear with me.
You okay, Jack?
Yeah, I'm alive. I, I, I don't know, I felt real dizzy, so I thought I was better let down before I passed out in front of the world. Yeah, you didn't look good. Yeah. I didn't feel too swift either.
So did you start it back up, Dan?
Yeah, it's just signing in.
Okay.
I gotta say, my connection's really slow, but this'll, I'll get there.
Okay.
No.
YouTube's, YouTube stream seems to be working if anyone hasn't checked yet, so.
Right, it says on YouTube in the corner.
I'm watching it on my desktop.
Joe, do you have a gavel?
How's that? Use my coffee. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it should be almost there, yeah.
Okay.
We're good.
There's more people.
If this is the only little kink that we have, I'm gonna be thrilled.
How come my thing keeps saying I'm talking when I'm not?
Maybe because I expect you to, Charlotte.
They just hear those wheels turning up there in that head.
I, I want me a neat thing like that, like Robert's guy, and like Justin's guy. I tried.
I've decided these, I've decided that these cameras on the computers are just not, they don't do much for you, do they?
Nope.
Well, you have to be able to be helped first, and. I'm not talking about you guys, I'm referring to myself.
Don't want to have a TV on in the background?
Oh, I do, sorry. There you go, that's why I was talking when.
There we go.
I've always got background noise on.
My hangup is saying that it's resolving host.
Okay.
Slow.
So.
I put the meeting ID in, I'm waiting for a place to put the password.
Okay. Okay.
I just clicked on the link in email. Wait, Justin sent me up to do.
We'll give it a couple more minutes, and if you can't get it, Dan, then if you're comfortable going just by phone, since I have you on the phone.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go get my charger, though, just to make sure my phone doesn't go out, so I'll be right back.
Robert, all we see is the top of your head there, we see a little piece of you.
Gee, Justin's in the beat.
I'm trying to finish my dinner quick.
I thought you were eating there. You got time, go ahead.
White House was really slow tonight, so I'm a half hour behind.
Show started half an hour sooner.
Here's my special speakerphone tonight.
Pam's background looks just like her office.
It says king of social distancing. Since this is the first meeting, I think I've not worn a tie to.
We know.
Okay, we're admitting Dan.
All right.
I hear him, I don't see him.
Does join in, he is going really slow tonight.
There he is.
There he is, there he is.
Got audio.
Audio.
There he is.
Finally. Stay at work and do this, because it's a better connection, but.
There we go.
Sorry about that, guys.
All right, so are we ready to do this?
I guess.
All right. I call the Norton City Council Committee Work Session for Monday, April twentieth, twenty twenty to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent reflection. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
And to the republic. Liberty and justice for all. Okay. And would the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Gaynor?
Here.
Mr. McLoane?
Here.
Mr. Karen?
Here.
Mr. Towsley? Ms. Whipkey?
Here.
Mr. Pilat?
Yeah.
Mr. Cronin?
Here. Communications from the, from the public, I, I understand that we did not get any emails in, Carrie?
We did not receive anything in the email.
All right, and if we get anything after the meeting, just to let everybody know on council and administration, the public, we will read those at the next, at the next meeting, if there are any communications from the public. So moving on to Committee of the Whole Appropriation Estimated Resources, Ms. Whipkey.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Charlotte, talk up a little bit, okay?
Well, okay. Thank you, Mr. President, this ordinance is basically authorizing amendments to the annual appropriations and estimated resources for our certificate that is required for us to send into the county, and there was a couple things that needed change during that. Is there any way you'd like to point out anything else, Ms. Keener?
Um, just reiterate the, you know, my email that I sent out, showing the funds that were needed to be in compliance with the seven oh five point three nine. So the depth of this legislation.
Anyone else?
Well, I just had a question, I think I know the answer, but this is just cleaning up and putting us in order moving forward, but it has absolutely nothing to do with our current situation, looking at the finances that may be a bit impaired in the near future because of the lack of taxable income.
Correct.
And then it will probably, down the road, need adjustment again, but that's for a different reason. Okay. How long do you anticipate that it will take before that actually comes up?
Well, since collections are not due until July fifteenth, I think we have a little while yet, but I'm analyzing it on a weekly basis, so I can report back to council as wished on the information I get from CCA.
I appreciate, I, I just kind of like to know a timeline, and, and that's close enough, that's probably the best anyone can do, I just wanted to get some sort of idea of what the future looked like, so, that's fine, I'm, that's all I had.
Then, this is something we need, we have to get in, I'm thinking that we need to waive the second and third readings on this. Nobody else has anything at this time, I motion to add ordinance forty-seven, twenty twenty, the council's next agenda, April twenty seventh, looking to waive the second and third readings with emergency language.
I'll second.
There's a motion in the second to add the ordinance to the next agenda, uh, second, third readings, is there any further discussion? Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Ms. Whipkey?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Cronin?
Yes. Letter B transfers, Ms. Whipkey.
Thank you, Mr. President, this is for ordinance forty-eight, twenty twenty, and this is to authorize transfers in order to balance the budget and bring it into compliance to be in the black and to make our auditors happy as we need to be every month.
Ms. Keener, is there anything else on that, or?
Actually, this is the, the annual approval for the budgeted transfers in and out, so you have to pass annually, authorizing finance structure to actually transfer in and out.
This, this is like we talked on the phone, then, that this would kind of eliminate our transfers that we do all the time?
This, this is actually the one-time legislation that you do annually. There will still be appropriation minutes, for sure, but this is actual transfers, authorizing myself to make the general fund to the other funds.
So I think what, I think what we're getting at, Ms. Keener, since you haven't been here, is that we used to do these things all the time, and now we're doing it one time, is that what you're talking about, Charlotte?
Yes.
Right, Justin?
Yes.
Yeah, instead of having to come back to council every, you know, month and a half or so and say, we need to get this passed by the end of the month, to bring ourselves the budget, within appropriation budget, we do it all upfront in one ordinance, and we had done one for twenty nineteen, we just had not done one for twenty twenty. So.
But we did lots of other transfers last, uh, last year too, on top of that.
Right, yeah, we had to do it a couple times, we had to, we had to go back and authorize additional transfers, that's correct.
So this isn't written in stone, that this is the, a one thing only deal?
That's right, it's just what, I think what Pam wants, what, what Ms. Keener wants to do is have what's budgeted passed, so at least what's budgeted is passed, if we have to come back to council because of other circumstances, then we could do that in the future.
Exactly.
And, and again, this isn't written in stone, and we can always go back to the way we are more accustomed to doing it at any time.
It's an option, yep.
Right. If then nobody else has anything, then I'll make a motion to add ordinance forty-eight, twenty twenty, the council's next agenda for April twenty seventh, again, looking to waive the second and third readings, and it has our emergency language.
I'll second.
There's a motion in the second to add ordinance number forty-eight, twenty twenty, the council's next agenda for first reading, is there any further discussion? Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Ms. Whipkey?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Cronin?
Yes. Police equipment, letter C, Mr. Towsley?
I can't understand you.
All right.
Me either.
Hold on, hold on, hey, Paul, hold on just a second, we're not getting your audio through, um, let me see if I, I don't know if I have your phone number. Yeah, my phone number, Paul? My cellphone?
I'm not hearing them.
Hold on. Thank you, Robert.
He looks so happy doing this.
Well, maybe a while, so.
Hi, this is Paul, sorry I missed you, please leave a message.
Oh, boy.
Oh, because he's doing Zoom, he's doing Zoom on his phone.
Oh, it's on his phone.
Disconnect.
Yeah.
Try again, Paul.
Can you hear me at all? Try disconnecting.
Yeah, just maybe turn off your video and just do your audio if you could. Are you there?
It, it looks like he's.
He's muted now.
He's muted, his, yeah, his audio.
Are you there?
I am here.
Okay.
Might just have a bad connection, probably just logged off and logged back in.
Can you, can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Perfect.
Okay, I can't see anything, but I can hear now.
Okay.
Will that work?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll just start with this. This is police equipment is going to be added to the Dodge Durango's that we purchased a couple of months ago. This is equipment that was budgeted. So it's, it's already been put in the budget. We just have to pass it. This is for light bars and stuff like that that will go to those cars. Is there anything the administration wants to add to that?
I would just say that.
Go ahead, Robert, go ahead.
I would just say that as long as it could go two reads, there's no real urgency, as long as we pass it in May, so we can get it ordered.
And Robert, this is, this is for the two new vehicles that we're buying, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And when will we get the?
Robert.
Uh, so the thing numbers just came, so we anticipate they'll be here in four to five weeks.
Robert, do you ever use the old equipment from the other, um, police cars?
We did when we, um, when we went charger to charger. Now that we're switching to the Durango all-wheel drive, it's a different equipment.
Okay, gotcha.
And what happens to that old equipment off the charger?
I will ask the chief, but it will have to go through the disposal process of the city in order to be disposed of.
Is there any other questions or comments on that? Okay, so with that, I will make a motion to add ordinance 49, 2020 to the next council meeting.
I'll second.
There's a motion in the second to add the ordinance to the next agenda. Is there any further discussion? Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Mr. Towsley?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Cronin?
Yes. All right. NOPEC grant, Ms. Whipkey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This legislation ordinance looking to be ordinance 50, 2020, is actually in order to receive a grant from the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, where we had taken up, was that the gas or electric, whatever it was. For a $750 grant that we have to put this in for, the $750 is actually based on the number of residents that signed up to use them for their utility. And this again is something that we was going to have the emergency language, and we're looking to waive the second and third reading on as well, I believe.
With Robert, or Justin, or anybody?
I will just, so the reason we're waiving the reading, we have to have the application in, in May. This is a new program because we are a new consumer of their services. It is for gas aggregation, and it's a per customer sort of rebate. We intended to use the money for a one-time project to be identified.
So this is money that we're getting from them, but we have to have the application in order to get it from them?
That's correct, and we'll have to do this every year.
Okay.
Because we're a new customer, I don't think we have many. There were some issues with the transition is why we have such a low status.
Okay.
Nobody else has anything at this time. I motion to add ordinance 50, 2020, to council's next agenda. Looking to waive the second and third readings, and it also contains emergency language.
I'll second.
There's a motion in the second to add ordinance number 50, 2020, to the next agenda for first reading. Is there any further discussion? Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Ms. Whipkey?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Cronin?
Yes. Letter E, chamber grant, Ms. Whipkey.
Thank you, Mr. President. This legislation is where we're going to, looking to join the Greater Akron Chamber Small Business Assistance that they're managing for Summit County COVID-19 Small Business Emergency Relief Grant Program. We would be putting in $25,000, which this money would be going only to Norton businesses. It would be strictly Norton businesses. At this time, as I understand it, there's been approximately 30 businesses that have applied for it. And it, the 25,000 is the most that we would be putting it in, and if I understand this correctly, it would be a minimum $5,000 per business. That would be our 25,000. So is that only five businesses that we would be helping, then, Mr. Fowler?
So the intent is the county put in some monies, CDVG and general fund. I think up to three-quarter of a million dollars. The 25,000 we put in would guarantee five businesses get funded in our community. The county is hoping to fund two to three more, so we're hoping for up to eight grants that would be funded through this process.
And if I, I'm wondering, can they actually add to that 5,000 above, above our 5,000 commitment?
I'm not certain that they're, I think their intent is to try to help as many businesses as they can at the $5,000 level. Especially with the, there are a lot of small businesses that didn't get funded in the PPP. So this is a bridge to help them through that difficult.
And who actually decides which businesses receive it, sorry?
So the chamber executive director, and I believe there's a team of people, including Connie Kraus from the county, that are reviewing the applications for funding.
Okay.
Hey, Robert, and also I'd like to add, though, that in, if we don't participate, then we will be, we'll be, we will be excluded during the, for this whole purpose, right?
The likelihood of our business getting funding without our support reduces drastically. There may be only one, if that would be the case.
Right.
Now, do we need to consider uh, financing more than the 25,000? Considering if we have 30 businesses, and if we're lucky, eight to 10 would get funded with our contribution of 25,000, do we need to look at upping that figure? Can we up that figure? Do we have the funds available?
I would say yes, and there's money budgeted under a revolving loan account in the Economic Development Fund. We thought 25 was a good start. And I wanted to see how the program went before we committed to much more funding.
So we can go, we can go back later if we want to and put more money into this, and I just want to, for my two cents worth. These are tough times for small businesses. We are trying to create a city where we are business-friendly, where we want businesses to thrive. And $25,000, when you look at our total budget, I mean, that's a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money in our total budget, and we should be here to support the businesses when they need that support. Because we've asked, or we have taxed them, not necessarily asked, we have gotten income from them, right? So now is the time when maybe we give back a little, and I think that's what we need to do.
Just, I add some, I add something to this. As we had to look at this for our own business, we applied for a loan of $55,000. It's based on two and a half months of taxable income and, and wages. It really has more to do with paying people who are employed and who can't work for different reasons, and a few other things that have a COVID relationship. They told us it was too small an amount for it to be considered. Now, that was 53 or $55,000. We, as a business, tried to apply for it, so we had to raise it to 63 to 65,000, which then was approved for us, for our business. Just putting in perspective, the smaller businesses, I'm thinking it's more like mom and pop things, because the 25,000 or 5,000 for a business is a tiny drop in the bucket. So I'm certainly encouraging exactly what Joe said, is to be business-friendly and be that helping hand, because we depend on the businesses and they depend on us. But I'm just putting in perspective, that is a tiny bit of money that will help some people. And whatever we can do, I think we need to consider that in the future. Let's see how far it goes, and if we can add more later, keep us business-friendly.
And, and the reason I brought that up originally, my company that I work for is a small business, and we were directly impacted. And now that companies are starting to lose business, companies are shutting down, now we have no orders coming in, our customers aren't paying, therefore, there's no money coming in, and there's no way to keep everything going without some type of assistance somewhere. We applied for the small business loans that were first made available through the federal government. Didn't hear a single word from the banks on anything about it. Supposedly, the Small Business Association today was taking applications, and I'm not sure where that'll go, but I just thought as many businesses that we can help out, we should try to help out. Like Dan said, you know, we, we want businesses to know that we're here to support them, do what we can, where we can. And I, I think it's just a good faith gesture. And, and I'm fine with seeing if we want to wait and kind of see if it goes here, the first go around.
How, how is this going to be promoted to our local community? How will they know about it? I understand we have 30 applications, which surprises me. How do they even know about that?
I'm assuming that Councilwoman McKinney was one that was pushing that. She was one of the co-sponsors of the legislation.
Okay.
And I know if you're looking.
And nobody would know about it, so that's why.
When it became available, though, I think I put it, if I remember, I think I've got it on, on my page as well. Just out there, tried to share it on my, on my Facebook. So not that everybody's got mine, you know, it gets on my page, but I do what I'm doing, what I can on my end to try to get it out there to some of the small businesses.
And most small businesses know, it'd be looking at the Small Business Administration's website right now during these times.
Yeah.
So if they're looking for funding, they're going to look there.
Okay. That's all I have for now.
Nobody else has anything at this time. I motion to add ordinance 51, 2020, to council's next agenda. Looking to waive the second and third readings, and it also contains emergency language.
I will second.
Joe, you're muted.
Uh, there we go. I should just leave that on, right? There's a motion in the second to add ordinance number 51, 2020, to the next agenda for first reading. Waiving second and third, is there any further discussion? Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Ms. Whipkey?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Cronin?
Yes. Letter F, liability and casualty insurance, Whipkey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Something we have to do every once in a while. Mr. Fowler has went out and found us another carrier, so to speak. Before we even get on that, I want to announce that this is going to have to be amended, because our current ordinance does not contain the correct emergency language. That we're going to have to add the mayor in on that, put his signature in for it to go in effect immediately. Just so everybody's aware, which we'll have this straightened out by our next meeting, when we're actually going to be voting on it. But anyway, we've used Wicke for years and years and years, and they've been going up for years and years and years. And now, like I said, Mr. Fowler has found us another one, and this is a proposal from a Whittaker Myers Insurance Service. And the actual plan, I guess, will be with Ohio Plan Risk Management. And it's actually like $17,000 cheaper than what our current carrier would have been. And if I understand this correctly, this is for liability and casualty, by the way, not to exceed $87,534. And if I said, if I understand this correctly, we're actually going to be getting some discounts over the next couple of years as well. Is that what I understood, Mr. Fowler?
Yes, so our police department subscribes to a service called Lexapol. This program will give us a 50% reduction in our Lexapol membership for one year, 30% next year, and 20 the year after. They view Lexapol as a way to reduce their liability. The Ohio Plan is a group of municipalities. It's only for municipalities. Our school district belongs to the Ohio Plan for school districts. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I mean, I looked, I looked through these proposals, and it just makes sense to change at this point.
I'm just curious, why were you part of that before? Why did, I mean, I'm glad you're finding that, but I'm just kind of wondering why this finally came up now. How long ago did we sign up for the last one? Is it like every three years, or? What's the time period?
I'm not certain when the last RFP was submitted. I know that we've been with Whittaker, or, I'm sorry, Wickers for extended period of time.
Years, years and years.
I believe this is about it. We're up for renewal, aren't we? Right now.
Yeah.
Hence is why we're going to be looking to waive the second and third readings and get this taken care of.
Well, I just, I mean, I'm glad that, Robert, that you went out, did the proposal and got the bids, because obviously we're going to be saving some money, so. I mean, that's a good thing, and we're saving some money here. We can use that money to help small businesses during this thing. I mean, that's a good trade-off to me.
I would just like to point out also, for anybody that might have noticed it, that this wasn't the lowest bid, but they had the best policy for what we're getting.
Lowest and best.
No, it's not the lowest.
Not the lowest, but I mean, you're looking for the best as well as.
Yeah, yeah, we're looking at something that's going to work for us and work well.
Right.
So if nobody else has anything at this time, I motion to add what will be the corrected ordinance 52, 2020, the council's next agenda, looking to waive the second and third readings, and this also will be containing the correct emergency language.
I'll second.
There is a motion in the second to add ordinance number 52, 2020, to council's next agenda for first reading. Is there any further discussion? Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Ms. Whipkey?
Yes.
Mr. Pilat?
Yes.
Mr. Cronin?
Yes. All right, we will be meeting next week in the same manner. All right, we will be meeting next week in the same manner on YouTube for our regular council meeting. And is there a motion at this time to adjourn?
Mr. Pilat? Were you going to discuss any topics for next work session?
What you need?
Just, at what point do we want to take a look? I sent Pam, Ms. Keener, an email earlier today. At what point do we start looking at how the funding or change in funding is going to affect our yearly budget? And on that same note, as we're talking about small businesses, are we looking to do anything for them besides this $5,000 or $25,000 grant to the Small Business Association? Trying to help them. Obviously, their income's going to be down as well. So I just didn't know if it's worth discussing at this time, or just wait until we get more information as we go along.
I do know that Mayor and Robert and Ms. Keener and the administration has asked that various departments to look at their budgets. Where there are places to perhaps start looking at cutting a little bit until we have a better idea. Ms. Keener, do you think that we can have a discussion about that at the next work session?
Yeah, we can definitely start having those discussions.
Yeah, and just a discussion on a top level. I mean, nothing in-depth, just, you know, hey, people need to be looking at at least, you know, 20% cuts in their budget, so start thinking about that. And then everybody needs to be looking at, okay, what are we looking at cutting? And how's that going to impact the services to the city? How's it going to affect the city employees and so forth?
I am certainly hoping that we're not looking at 20% cuts in budgets. I'm hoping that that things will start getting back to normal mid-May or beginning of June, I'm hoping. I know that the governor has talked about starting to reopen things at the beginning of May, perhaps mid-May, and things will start to turn around. I know I'm just, that's a hope. I'm just hoping, but you are correct, Scott, that we need to be looking at it and preparing for it, and I think I think the administration, the mayor and the administration are doing that.
Yeah, Ms. Keener said that they, they had been on top of it. They'd been looking at it, and I thank you for getting back to me so quickly. My concern is, yeah, even if we open up in mid-May, I mean, knowing what's happened up to this point, it's going to take businesses some time before they get back up to speed. And I got to believe that's going to add another month to this whole thing, so overall, I mean, we're going to probably be looking at almost three months where businesses are not going to be performing to, to where they would normally.
Hopefully not, but we, we shall prepare as much as we can, I would, I would assume.
Sounds good.
So maybe at the next work session, we can have a discussion regarding what we're looking at as far as that's concerned, and what our, what our plan is. I'm sure there's plans already in, in progress. I know I spoke with Robert a little bit about that they're looking at budgets and things of that nature, and hopefully it won't be that drastic.
Yeah. Also, in case you haven't heard, today, Governor also announced that for the remainder of this school year, the, it'll all be computerized, and they won't be going back to school. So just so you know, that, that, that part there is, is, was announced today as well.
Anything further for topics for the next work session? Their motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, we're adjourned.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.